Everyone, the November 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting now come to order. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Good evening. Let's take a moment of silence for our deceased residents for the month of October 2021. Albina Baldino, John Sisofo, and Joan Massey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Willard, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Ms. Suiki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Present.
Mr. Gilroy.
Present.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willward's here. Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Weiss.
Here.
That concludes roll.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ford, are you ready?
Yep.
Good evening, Ms. Ford.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for having me back again. It's always a pleasure. This month, we would like to extend a thank you to the Brookhaven Fire Department for visiting Coburn Elementary students in grades K through five during Fire Prevention Week. All of our students learned lessons on fire safety and then were able to meet our hometown heroes, tour the fire trucks, tour the ambulance, and learn about EMS. The students also received a lot of fun, trinkets, fire hats, and of course, an activity book to support the lessons on fire safety. So, thank you again for that. We really appreciate that the department comes out and does education with all of our students in grades K through five. It's just such an important week for our students. Also, Red Ribbon Week. Throughout the week of October 25th, Coburn Elementary students and staff took part in Red Ribbon Week, which is celebrated annually to raise awareness about the dangers of drugs and to honor fallen drug enforcement agents. Students and staff participated in, of course, spirit activities as a way to help children understand just say no to drugs campaign. We had an outdoor movie night this past month. Coburn Elementary families enjoyed a drive-in style movie night. We actually were able to have it in the field this year, and parents and students. We're going to invite a lot more parents and students this year, so it was really nice to have a fun family outing and get back to a little more normalcy this year. The professional setup of a 32-foot screen and the sound was a big hit. The families enjoyed a showing of Monsters, Inc. It was a great family night out. And thank you also to the Brookhaven Police Department for checking in throughout the evening to ensure all was going well. Coburn is hosting a... Coburn Student Council is hosting a food drive this month, and we will be collecting non-perishable food and canned items through November 19. The bins are located in the school lobby for all who would like to donate. And of course, American Education Week is the week before Thanksgiving, and a time to celebrate students, staff, families, and education. The Coburn Elementary team is committed to partnerships with families and our community as we work together to empower our children, fostering academic and personal growth. And we certainly appreciate all that this community and the council and our fire department, police department, and everything that you all do for our school and our children. Thank you. And once again, if you'd like to see what's happening daily at Coburn Elementary, follow us on Twitter, @CoburnES, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Amazing to hear already. You're welcome.
Is there anyone for public discussion? Going once, going twice, first public discussion session is closed. Chief Montella.
Evening.
Evening, Chief.
Our Brookhaven Fire Company's monthly report for October 2021, three fire incidents in the borough, 21 non-fire, 34... four calls for mutual aid, four drills, total of 62 for the month, 535 calls for the year. We had a $30,000 loss on structure, $10,000 on contents, for a total of $40,000. We had $300,000 of property endangered. For the year, we've had $3,460,000 of property endangered. No firefighter injuries, no civilian injuries. Our fire calls were 47, average firefighter 16, 709 hours in service, 6,492 for the year. Our training was four training sessions, 29 average firefighters, 131 hours of training, 1,986 hours for the year of training. We responded to the following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had a building fire on Lincoln Drive, contained to the garage. The family still able to occupy the home. The fire company had a good, great stop on that fire. We had a building fire at the Burger King restaurant. It was a grease fire contained to the side of the fryer and up the fryer sidewall. Made a building fire at Stonehill Apartments in K Building, gas leak at the Borough Hall on the District Ward Rooftop HVAC unit, and we had an accident 3,900 block of Edgemont Avenue, and an accident at 352 at Duttonville Road. Assisted upland fire company on building fire on Vista Lane, and we had a building fire at Third Street and a building fire on Front Street and assisted upland on an accident on Interstate 95 northbound at Curlin Street. Assisted the Chesker Fire Department on building fire on Honan Street, and we covered the city with our ladder while they were operating on that fire. Assisted Swatmore Fire Company on a building fire on Garrett Avenue. Assisted Garden City Fire Company on a building fire on Rose Valley Road and Avondale Road. And we assisted Middletown Fire Company on a building fire at Lafayette Circle. We assisted Rocky Run Fire Department on a building fire on East Forge Road and the Aston Township Fire Department on a building fire at Newman College Dorm. Also assisted Chester Township on a building fire at 3M Products. Our monthly training was ground ladder operations, hydrants and water supply operations, ropes and rigging, and forcible entry with our training door. Currently don't have the ambulance report completed for the meeting. We'll have it submitted later. Apologize for that. Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Have a good one.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Weiss.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So, for the month of October, the Brookhaven Police Department initiated or assigned 821 CAT assignments through Delcom, and some of those noteworthy incidents, 10 thefts, five assaults, two criminal mischief, five fraud, three DUI, 30 suspicious conditions, 25 disturbances or domestic disputes, 54 medical assists, four mental health responses, 43 assists to other agencies, 19 alarms, 27 vehicle crashes, and 28 hazardous conditions or fire company calls. For the month, the total loss to victims was approximately $17,543. Recovered of that amount was $12,985. There were 33 adult arrests for the month, one juvenile arrest. There were 136 citations issued, 22 parking violations, and 90 warnings were issued. This month, I'd like to commend Officer James Kelso for his thorough investigation into a road rage incident where a firearm was displayed. His dedication to seeing the investigation through led to the identification and arrest of the subject that was responsible. I'd also like to thank Detective Habbak, Officers Subers, Eastman, and Johnston, as well as the Delco SWAT team for assisting us. I'd also like to say thank you to my secretary, Sandy Fuller. This month, she's been tasked with helping sort through thousands of case files to make sure that we're in compliance with the Criminal History Record Information Act, something that I found we wanted to make sure we were up to speed. It's very tedious, and she's put a lot of hours in, so I'm grateful for the work she's doing. As far as training for the month, Officers Eastman and Kelso attended a week-long training. They brought back a ton of useful information that has been very beneficial to all of the officers in our department. It was very valuable training. Officer Wetton attended SWAT training and also attended training for less lethal instructor training, so we now have our own in-house less lethal instructor trainer... instructor for our department. Officer Kelso also completed A-Ride training, which is an advanced roadside impairment training for DUI and drug detection. So, he did that this month. And Officers Martin, Habbak, Wetton, Zebly, Kelso, and Johnston attended EVOC training, which was something that I found we were lacking. So, I'm trying to get everybody in the department through that, so we're halfway through. Also, the police department took delivery of two new police vehicles. One went in service today. We're very happy with it. The technology and the equipment that we have in these cars is amazing, so I'm very happy that we have at least one of them in service. The other one should be soon to follow. As far as this month, we also participated in the statewide Operation Safe Stop on October 20th. This initiative was to bring awareness to motorists to be mindful of school bus violations, and I appreciate the officers that helped us out with that. And as I previously mentioned, our police department is participating in No Shave November, obviously. It's going better for some than others. Some's a little... Some of us have a little more gray than we would have liked, but at any rate, we're raising money for the Hope for Haley Foundation. We're taking orders for a patch that we designed, which I have on the table over there. There's also a golf shirt to give you an idea.
Here's the patch.
So, that's the patch. All of the money, every dime, is going to Hope for Haley Foundation. There's paperwork there that'll also tell you a little bit about Hope for Haley. It'll explain why we chose that as our fundraiser for the month of November. And just lastly, I encourage everybody to follow us on Facebook, because as you can probably see, I post a lot of things. I'm trying to get information out there, so that's what I have for my report.
Chief, would you like to discuss accreditation now or after the motion?
That's up to you. However...
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Do it now. Throw it now.
Just grab my paper.
If he's going to talk about it, probably should. Yeah, right after he... Yeah. Makes most sense. The audience understands.
So, I'll keep this very brief, but just to give everybody a basic understanding, when I was going through the process of being hired here, I spoke about how important I think PliAC accreditation is to this police department, to this borough, and also to this community. And I still stand here today, believe... I believe it is the direction we need to go. I do think within the next few years, accreditation is going to be required for most police departments if you want to have any type of state or federal funding. So, just a quick blurb about PliAC. It is the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Accreditation is a progressive and time-proven way of helping departments evaluate and improve their overall performance. The cornerstone of the strategy is the standards containing clear statement of professional objectives. It was designed and developed by professional law enforcement executives to provide a reasonable and cost-effective plan for professionalization of law enforcement agencies within the Commonwealth. It is overseen by the PA Chiefs of Police Association, and the underlying philosophy is to have a user-friendly undertaking for the departments that will result in a success-oriented outcome. Just a couple of the benefits of accreditation. It will ensure alignment with best practices and establishes a credible framework for evaluating these practices and procedures. It will create clearly defined expectations, performance, and responsibility. It will standardize activities and raise the level of professionalism of our agency. There is a risk reduction involved. Accredited agencies have fewer officers injured and fewer litigation claims when compared to those that are not accredited. There are fewer workers' compensation claims, as well as fewer law enforcement liability claims, which translate into lower insurance costs and less time in court. There obviously is an end benefit to our taxpayers. I do believe that accreditation, as I said, in the near future will be a requirement in order to receive state and federal funding. With that said, the Rogers Group has been working with police departments for over 10 years. They have over 300 clients in multiple states. They're very familiar with Delaware County and are currently working with Radnor, Upper Darby, Eddie Stone, Delaware County Sheriffs, and most recently, Nether Providence, who just attained their accreditation. The Rogers Group engages with their clients for the total process, from the start through the accreditation award. They ensure policy development meets the goals of the specific agency and represents the culture of the agency as well as its residents. The Rogers Group will stand behind all the developed policies if any litigation occurs. Accreditation will be completed in less than a quarter of the time typical agencies take to complete it in-house. Our department is a small department, and we just don't have the resources to assign an officer to handle this accreditation process. There's also initial training that would be involved, which could even... before we could even start the process, which would greatly delay our accreditation. With the Rogers Group, we would start right away with skilled and experienced accreditation managers leading the process and doing the legwork. I will also be taking on added responsibilities for this process, which I believe is vitally important. The Rogers Group will never ask the borough to sign any type of release of liability because they stand behind their product and performance, even if it means standing beside us in court. Accreditation is necessary, and I'm asking for council support in approving me to begin the process with the Rogers Group and get our department on the path to attaining accreditation.
So, with that...
You can wait for your piece to do the motion.
Just want me to make the motion?
Unless you want to do it now? Go ahead, do it now.
Do it now.
Miss Suiki says so?
Yeah.
What's the exact motion that we should...
Well, it's to utilize the Rogers Group.
Right, to assist us with the accreditation process.
The motion would be to approve the Rogers Group to assist in obtaining PliAC accreditation.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
You want to make that motion? Do we have a second?
Oh, I guess I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions?
You should. No.
No one opposed?
No.
I forgot to say aye, so aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Janice. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Will, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the borough secretaries and any members of the public which would like to review it. At this time, I have a few action items that I would bring before council and the public's attention. Number one concerns the Brookhaven self-storage facility that is located on approximately 2.4 acres of undeveloped land on the south side of Brookhaven Road. The Planning Commission had reviewed the revised land development plan at its October 19th, 2021 meeting, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the land development plan. The Borough Council shall recall back on October 25th at our council workshop meeting. We had a brief presentation from the applicant's attorney, as well as his architect, to provide a brief summary of that particular land development plan. And so, I have before council for their particular consideration this evening, a resolution conditionally approving this particular reverse subdivision and land development application. And I will try to summarize this resolution for the convenience of council and the public. Whereas, a preliminary slash reverse subdivision and land development plan for Brookhaven Storage, submitted by Brookhaven Storage LLC, situated on 2.4 acres of undeveloped land on the south side of Brookhaven Road in the borough of Brookhaven, prepared by SLD Planning and Consulting Engineers dated February 14th, 2020, and last revised October 25th, 2021, has been submitted for approval. And whereas, the applicant is proposing to consolidate 22 lots totaling 2.4 acres into one lot and develop a three-story freestanding self-storage facility on the property with 11 parking spaces. And whereas, said plan has been reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission, the Delaware County Conservation District, the Borough Engineer, and as well as our Delaware... strike that, as well as the Brookhaven Borough Planning Commission. And whereas, said plan is generally in conformity with the Borough Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance. Now, therefore be it resolved, that said plan is hereby approved as the preliminary slash final land development and reverse subdivision plan, subject to 13 enumerated conditions. I'm not going to indicate those for the public, but we have basically 13 conditions that this plan would obviously be conditioned upon. And we have one waiver, that being from Section 817E of the Borough Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance entitled Perimeter Building Landscaping. Again, with the justification that the use of the building requires loading zones that are paved around the perimeter of the building. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt this particular resolution granting conditional approval of this reverse subdivision and land development application.
Who wants the motion?
I'll take the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
Very well. Second item on my agenda concerns the Popeyes Land Development Plan over on Edgemont Avenue. Of course, this plan had been conditionally approved by Borough Council at its September monthly meeting. I'm pleased to report that the developer has recently executed a development agreement, a public improvement security agreement, an agreement for the escrow and payment of professional fees, and a stormwater management, operations, maintenance, and inspection agreement. Developer has recently submitted to my office, and I have approved the public improvement security performance bond. The developer has also submitted to the Borough cash payment for supplemental public improvements, professional fees, and EDUs in the amount of $79,948.98, and that is in the safe and secure hands of the Borough Secretary, whom I'm assuming that has now been deposited in the escrow account. And so, I believe the developer is now prepared to come in for construction permits, so those permits will then be turned over to Mr. Catania's office, and they can proceed. Third item on my agenda concerns the Delcor Eastern Service Area 537 Plan Update. Again, Delcor is proposing to redirect wastewater flows from the Eastern Service Area, which currently discharges to Philadelphia Southwest Water Pollution Control Center, to Delcor's Treatment Plant in Chester, Pennsylvania. Now, this plan update would not really affect Brookhaven Borough, but we are still required to review it, so the Planning Commission is scheduled to review this next week at its November 16, 2021 meeting. That meeting will take place in this room at 7:30 PM, and certainly, members of the public are invited to attend. Third item on my agenda, or I should say, the fourth item on my agenda, concerns the property at 5,000 to 5,005 Edgemont Avenue. That is the shopping center complex that currently comprises the Lowe's Department Store, as well as other related commercial facilities in that area. Earlier this year, the Pendelco School District had filed an appeal with the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas, challenging the tax assessment of that commercial shopping center. The property was assessed at $18,225,520 for tax year 2021. The school district and its appraisers believed that particular tax assessment did not comprise or comport with fair market value, and therefore, it took an appeal. The school district and the property owner have now reached a tentative agreement fixing the assessment for the property this year at $26 million. That is a 43% increase in the tax assessment. That will result in a substantial increase in Borough tax dollars coming in for the year 2021 and 2022. Therefore, the school district and the property owner have requested, obviously, that the County of Delaware and the Borough of Brookhaven, which are the other two taxing authorities that affect this particular parcel, that they agree to this particular settlement. And therefore, I have before Borough Council a resolution, and I'll briefly read this particular resolution. Whereas, the Borough Council of the Borough of Brookhaven has been informed that an agreement and a stipulation has been reached in the matter of the assessment appeal of the Pendelco School District with regard to premises situated at 5,000 to 5,005 Edgemont Avenue for the tax assessments for the year 2021 and 2022. And whereas, the approval of the proposed stipulation is required by the council prior to the execution of the agreement by the solicitor on behalf of the Borough. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Brookhaven, that having been apprised of the contents of this agreement and stipulation reached by the solicitor, does hereby approve its execution and delivery to the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County. Obviously, this is in the great interest of the Borough to approve such a stipulation. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order at this time to approve this particular resolution.
Janice?
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
No questions?
Yeah, do we know with the resolution, John, we had one before...
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, the resolution number for this one and the one we just had for the reversed subdivision?
I'll give them to you.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
With this particular stipulation, the increase in the fair market value of that property is now fixed at $26 million.
Yes.
That is perhaps one of the highest, if not the highest, tax assessed parcel in the Borough of Brookhaven. Quite frankly, we don't have many properties in the Borough of Brookhaven that are valued at $26 million. So, again, this is certainly good news for the taxpayers of the Borough of Brookhaven, and certainly good news for the Pendelco School District, because there will be substantial revenues that'll flow in to both the Borough, the county, and the school district office. Yes, counsel, Ms. Suiki?
I just had a question. The other shopping center across the street from that, is that slated for the same work by the Pendelco School?
Yeah, I'm not aware that they have taken an appeal of that particular property, but it is my understanding that the Pendelco School District is taking a very proactive approach.
I appreciate it.
Again, these aren't... These are large parcels.
I agree.
Obviously, these are commercial tack... parcels. They have not been scrutinizing residential assessments, but certainly, the large commercial assessments, they are reviewing thoroughly, and I applaud them for doing that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, too.
Now, with that, Mr. President, I can report General Rogers.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the agenda, we have Brookhaven Storage. We can recommend approval of a public escrow improved... public improvement escrow in the amount of $389,285.82, plus $19,450 for inspections.
Who wants it?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No questions? Carries?
The sewer treatment plant operation and maintenance contract. The Borough received three bids for the operation and maintenance of the sewage treatment plant. Going to recommend award to KBX Golden LLC at their two-year bid price of $130,112, plus bid unit prices for service work. It's with an optional annual renewal, as the Borough's description, for up to three years, up to and including the year 2026. Should be all subject to the solicitor's review.
Who wants the motion?
I'll take it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Not opposed?
Does it start...
Any questions? There you go.
I'm sorry, does it start January 1st?
January 1st.
Okay.
Carries?
Sure.
All right. Shepherd Street Storms or Office was referred to complaint of a sinkhole by a storm sewer inlet. Going to ask council to authorize repair of that storm sewer inlet.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We've all talked about it, just got no questions. Carries?
We have police station bathroom plumbing repair. There's been a plumbing issue with the bathroom in the police station for a while. We had a contractor come look at that. Going to ask council to authorize repair by E.J. Hosbach in the amount of $4,000.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
On that same subject, there's a larger project for a complete bathroom renovation project. We received bids for that on October 28th. There were five bids for the general construction ranging from $47,000 to $96,000, and three bids for the plumbing construction ranging from $30,000 to $49,000. Those bids are still under review, will have a recommendation at later date.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I would have would be, we had awarded a contract to Mobile Dressing Video Pipe for sanitary sewer rehabilitation work on Edgemont Avenue. This is from Brookhaven Road to Maple Avenue. Those contracts haven't executed, and Mobile Dressing has notified us that they have tentatively planned to start the week of November 15th, and that'd be subject to supply of materials. So there'll be some traffic control during the few days on that stretch. Other than that, my report is on file. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone that came out and voted. Everyone had a great run, everyone that was on the ballot, whether you were Republican or Democrat. Everything was wonderful, and thank you to the residents for voting me back in. I want to thank everyone for attending our Veterans Day service. I want to take this time to thank the American Legion Commander Harry Seth, Pastor Gannier, Williamson College of the Trades Artists Choir, Lynn Stauffer, our guest speakers Dave Tatum, Lieutenant Colonel Ryan Finn, State Rep Kruger, the VFW Post 3460 of Media that did our rifle salute, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, the Knights of Columbus, Harry Swagum for setting everything up and breaking it all down, and the Brookhaven Borough Staff, Police Department and Fire Department for attending. I'm also going to read what I read at our American Legion post. I just want to say that our American Legion post almost folded this year. We need the younger veterans to step up and join. Our elderly veterans are having a hard time making it to our meetings and being involved. It's too cold out and too hot out for them to stand outside and help us fundraise. We are trying our best to keep going. If you know of any veteran that would like to join and help out, please reach out to our Commander Harry Seth or myself. This is very important for us to keep going. So if you know anyone, anybody, the younger guys that are maybe up on the banners, that may be your grandson, or granddaughter, or aunt, or uncle, please have them reach out to us. We really need to keep this going. This is near and dear to my heart.
I have all their emails. I'll send an email out to them.
Great, thank you.
And all the banner applicants.
And I just want to say Happy Veterans Day, and thank you to all the veterans that are near and far. And then also on my report, I want to thank Sean McKenna, the Jackson Family, and Chief Vice for including me in the car run for the Hope for Haley yesterday. It was a great event and well-attended by everyone, so thank you, and Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
I just wanted to say thank you for Veterans Day. It was very, it was very moving. People who were there really appreciated it. And anybody who missed it, it was one of the best that I've ever attended, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Because I know you organized it.
Yes.
And the Williamson Trade School was, they were wonderful.
They were fantastic.
I'm so glad they were there. I talked to somebody who was in the St. James Choir, they had seven people that died.
Yes.
And that's, that's why they weren't there. But it's from COVID, it's really-
Seven died, three from COVID.
Yeah, three from COVID, seven died.
And Dave Talbot was incredible.
That's true.
Former Upper Darby High School teacher.
He was, he was-
That's on our YouTube.
We should have him again.
Get on the YouTube site and check out Dave Talbot's speech.
We need to have him come back for something maybe where the kids-
Yeah, he was, he was very moving.
Yes, it was very nice this year.
Thank you.
And if I could add, Mr. Wills is not done with us, so go ahead, Mr. Wills.
This Thursday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. It is a federal holiday. It is a day we honor and celebrate those who have won the uniform and served in the United States Armed Forces. In the increasingly cynical world that we live in today, some Americans, especially those among our younger generation, may question the value of military service and ask why we so honor our veterans. The answer is a simple one, and is encapsulated in a brief poem I'd like to share with everyone, and it reads as follows. It is the veteran, not the preacher, who has given us freedom of religion. It is the veteran, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press. It is the veteran, not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech. It is the veteran, not the campus organizer, who has given us freedom to assemble. It is the veteran, not the lawyer, who has given us the right to a fair trial. It is the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote. It is the veteran with faith in God and country who has given us all our freedoms. It is a rather compelling and thought-provoking poem. Here in the Borough of Brookhaven, we are pleased and proud to have among our elected leadership two veterans. I would ask that Mayor Denise Leslie and Council Vice President Hector Vasquez, please stand and be recognized. I would also ask if there are any other additional veterans in this room, please stand and be recognized. And thank you.
How do I follow that?
Thank you, Mr. Wills.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wills. I want to thank everyone for the love and support in electing me to another four years. The results are not official, but four of us have a comfortable enough lead to where we can't be caught, so you're stuck with me for another four years. Thank you very much. It means more than you could ever think, imagine. I do not have a robust report tonight. I spent the last two weeks stressing over the election and pulling my hair out, so I need a motion to approve the October 4th, 2021 council minutes.
Make the motion.
Second? Wake up, second? What are you looking at me like that for?
Hector did.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Motion to approve the October 25, 2021 council workshop.
I'll make the motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I want to thank Sean Guthrie and Billy McKenna for doing the Parkside Hometown Hero Banner installation last week, taking time out of their busy schedule. We did it free of charge to Parkside. The boys were already working, and they were between grass cutting and leaf pickup. So we, we have the bucket truck now, so we did it on the house. We were proud to do it, and they're very, very, very grateful. One more thing, we are holding a brief executive session after tonight's council meeting to discuss a legal matter regarding real estate. That is all I have for the evening. Once again, thank you all for your kind support. Ms. Sewicki, congratulations to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. I do have a couple things tonight. The bill list for November, general fund is $388,588.4. That does include the two new police cars that we obtained. Sewer fund is $17,572.48. The trash fund is $600 for a total monthly of $406,760.52. So we do need a motion for that. I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Who wants a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item I have is, in September, we did pass the MMOs for Minimum Municipal Obligation. We were notified by our pension guy that basically Harrisburg made a mistake in the computer, and we had to, they recalculated it, and we are paying less, but I mean, it came to, to good for us. But for the police pension, it'll be $278,505. It was like $330,000, so we did save money on that one, and, and, yeah, and the one for the non-uniform is $24,948. So I'm going to make a motion for each, because I do have to sign these and we have to mail them out tomorrow, because it goes back to Hasburg, even though. I just want you to know that we, we always do it in September, except now they, because our computer had a glitch, we are taking, you know, I appreciate it, because we made, we saved a lot of money.
See, the good news is after the election, it's supposed to be the other way around, Ms. Sewicki.
Well, we just got new to stuff at that.
I know.
Okay, so it's the minimum municipal obligation for 2022 for the Brookhaven Police Pension Plan. So the amount is $278,505. So I'm making a motion so we can approve that tonight.
What's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second one is the Minimum Municipal Obligation Budget for 2022 for Brookhaven Borough for a non-uniformed pension plan. So people in the pension plans, the people at the Raj, Mary, John, Delar-
Building staff workers and public works.
Yes, staff, who are not non-uniform. So it's $24,948. So I'm going to make that motion.
Who wants a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to spend some time, not much, but I'm going to go through the budget for 2022. It's not really, I don't consider it bad. I mean, it's pretty much what it was last year, but we are going to have this budget on, you can go to the Borough from November 17th through December 3rd to get a copy. So anybody who wants a copy, they'll be available next Wednesday at the office. And then I'm going to try to get, John said he would put it on the computer for the-
On the website.
The website. So this way, people that can't get to the office could read it. So the mileage for Brookhaven is 2.72, which is what it was as a result of the, when we had the reassessment last year, so that stays the same. And our, actually, our earned income and mercantile and business privilege have come back, so that's good. And that gives us a really healthy revenue from those two, two types of taxes. And the budget for the general fund budget is $5,876,650. Now, most of our expenses are pretty much in line with what they were before. We do have, in the police department, we do have two new full-time officers that we're hoping to hire this year. And that'll give Chief Vice the manpower that he needs to make the department better, and I see the improvement already, so we're very happy with what he's doing, and we're, I know we all support him, so I just wanted to make people realize. And we do have some money in here that he needed, so, the accreditation and, and the rest, and the two new cars. We did, as, I wanted to explain about the two cars, we received this year from the American Rescue Fund, $421,000. From that money, we paid in this bill list for the two new, it's 2021 Dodge Durangas, which he used in his prior department, and the men seem to really appreciate it, and they, they seem to run better than the ones we had before. So I'm happy about that. Now, we had the police package put in, and we also got the limited, we got the five-year warranty, because if the cars go down for some reason, we could take it back to the dealership and it'll be covered under the warranty, which hopefully will save us a lot of the little bills that we get with repairs to cars, so hopefully that'll work for us. Now, we do have money in, of course, for our new fire truck, which we are hoping to get in '23, and next year, we're putting $105,000 there for 2022. And hopefully, since we expect to receive, if we do get it in '23, we're going to put more money. So I'm estimating Chief Rob, Rob, hopefully $350,000 we're going to have in escrow by the time you take possession in '23, and if we can put more next year. But I mean, we have been, we've been saving for a while, and we do need to make a healthy deposit, because when he picks up the truck, we have to give cash, and then we take out loans for the rest. And I expect it to be probably a little more than it was a few years ago when we got the Wester. And public works, we do have some repairs in here for stormwater, street paving, all the normal things that we always do have, so. And we have money in here for insurance. And I did want to, I did want to mention to people who may not realize it, January 2025, we will have our mortgage paid off, which is the bond issue, whereas of right now, we have $194,000 left, and that's, you know, over the next, you know, two and a half years. So we are coming very close to it. So hopefully, we'll have something for January 2025 to kind of celebrate burning our mortgage. That's just a thought. That's something for them to think about.
I think we need a break.
I have to give them ideas, and then they can, they can plan whatever they want to plan.
You have four more years. That's right.
And after Christmas party. Okay, now, I did have also in here the American Rescue planned funds. We have a list of what is on there for, we have to, we have to put like a page in the budget for that. So it's the $421,241. Of that, we spent $103,685 for the two vehicles that we received. We have $317,556 left. Of that, it's evenly divided between stormwater maintenance and sanitary sewer maintenance. So I think Mr. Catania will be happy about that. Now, that, I saw, well, I also asked for, I talked to Mr. Catania two months ago about hopefully televising the entire length of Edgemont Avenue, because when I went through the budget, I noticed very happily that our business taxes are up, and since the pandemic, this is the highest they've ever been. And I was hoping that we could try to televise all of Edgemont Avenue in order to pinpoint any problems that may be developing, because the sewer lines in that street are 50 to 60 years old. That is the life expectancy. And because we have so much revenue coming from that street, we really need to protect it. So I did talk to Hector and Mr. Catania about this a couple months back, and I'm hoping maybe this year, we would be able to use some of the money from American Rescue to just televise it, and we will have the tape, and we'll know exactly where our problems are, and hopefully, we'll be able to use this money next year. And we're also getting another $421,000 in the next two years, so we, that we get two chunks of the same money. So hopefully, between that, if we have a problem on Edgemont Avenue, which we don't want. And the reason I bring this up is most people here don't realize, but 30 years ago, on Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon is the street that if you come in from Upland Road and you see the little island, well, that street starts, one-third of the beginning of that street collapsed on us 30 years ago, and we had to pay $500,000 in five $100,000 payments to the bank, because that's what it cost 30 years ago to replace a third of a street on a residential avenue on a street. You have to realize, this stuff is extremely expensive. That's one of the reasons we got American Rescue. They're pushing infrastructure, because it is, you have no idea how bad it is, and the deeper the hole, the more money. That hole was 30 feet down, and that street was, it was horrible. These people went through hell for a long time. We fixed it as fast as we could, but the bill took us five years to repay. So I mean, if I can do something to stop us from having to have another collapse, and my biggest fear is Edgemont Avenue. I don't want anything to happen there, because it really will make our business district really bad, and it will be negative. And I know Mr. Allen, his business is on Edgemont Avenue, so he'll appreciate benefiting from that. So hopefully, if there's any problems, we can fix them. That is, okay. Now I'm into trash fund. Okay, trash fund, basically, the fee was $250 last year. Unfortunately, the fee, we have, the third year of our contract is next year, but when- is next year. But when our hauler takes the trash to the place where he takes it, we keep, we, there's a fee that the county makes us pay for the tonnage. And it's been going up slowly. So this year, it's eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents is what it's going to cost each homeowner, which is the money we pay every month. I'm paying like a hundred and ninety thousand next year for just the tonnage. So that's, the eleven dollars is what that is really for everybody. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Sewer fund, yes, there is a sewer fund change because Delkor just notified us that it's thirty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents for anybody whose house is serviced by Delkor. So it's not the people who are in southwest. It's not the people that are in the Brookhaven plant, but it's another thirty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Because that's what they're sending to us. So it's in your, it's in your tax bill and we collect it. And all the money we collected this year from your tax money, February first, I had to take and send another check for eight hundred plus thousand. And next year, in twenty-three, when you pay next year and we get the money, that gets, they get paid in February. You pay this year and so in twenty-three, that bill is one point one million dollars. So that's what Delkor is going to get from eight hundred and eight, eight hundred and eighty thousand to one point one million in one year. So I'm just throwing that out there so people will realize what these things are going to cost. I mean, it's, it's water and trash. Those are the two things that people need and they do keep going up. Now, what I do need to do now is because we presented it and we'll have it on inspection, we had to make a motion to adopt the proposed budget for two thousand twenty-two so that we can follow, we had to do that first. And then we had to make a motion to advertise. That's what's in the rules for Pennsylvania. Yeah. So I'm going to make the motion to adopt the proposed two thousand twenty-two budgets.
What's the second?
I'll, I'll take that second.
Are you all right?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions, Mr. Vaskus?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Do you have any questions?
No, no. I just wanted to add that the American Rescue Funds had strict stipulations for where the money can go.
Yep.
There's public safety, infrastructure. And I forget the, the other one was for any lost funds for employees that were having issues paying due to tax, money's not coming in, things of that nature. So that's kind of why we're slotting things ago in the area as you, when you go to take a look at this budget, if you do. And I highly suggest you do. You know, it's, it's your money's being put to work here. But that's kind of the reason why we're kind of going with where we're putting it at, in the infrastructure and the police vehicles. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. You had another motion, Janice?
Yeah, did we vote, we voted on that one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, motion, I need a motion to advertise the two thousand twenty-two budget, the ordinances, and the budget resolutions.
I'll make the motion.
Who wants a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I, I, the last thing I'm going to say is at the workshop this month, anybody who has a question, bring it, if you have a question for me for this, you know, between myself and Hector and Donna, we can, you know, answer the questions if you have any. Once you have a chance to look at this. So I just wanted to announce that for them. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Do the, uh, motion for the bills?
To pay bills.
Motion for the bills?
Oh, we did. That was the first thing we did.
We did that. I'll pay attention.
That is, no, that's the first. I try to do that first so we don't forget. Because we had a lot of money to, this is toward the end of the year, we always try to pay all, everything we have to.
And the good news, Councilwoman Suicki, is that the preliminary budget calls for no property tax increase.
That's correct.
For twenty twenty-two.
That's correct. But that's all I have.
Good job, Janice. Good job.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay?
Are you, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Yeah.
I almost pulled a Joe Biden on you there. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee will not meet this month. Mimi McGovern and I will be meeting again either tomorrow or Wednesday to continue to move stuff from our old website to the new website. And we're hoping to turn the new website over in December, Mimi. The murder mystery dinner will be this Friday night, November twelfth. The shred and electronics event is this Saturday at Coburn School from nine a.m. until noon. And again, I want to reiterate that we will be checking IDs to make sure that everyone is a Brookhaven resident. So please, spread the word. If you're not living in this town, you're not going to be able to come over there and drop off your items. The Brookhaven Holiday Parade will be Saturday, November twentieth. And we have some new things we're adding to the parade. Should I talk about that, Sherry, or, okay. So at Coburn School, at Coburn School, we are going to be having a little area for Santa to go. And we're going to have that built.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. And we're going to have a food truck. We're going to have a dessert table. Everything's going to be for purchase. It's not going to be on the Borough. So we're just going to be adding a couple of little things at the end of the parade. So depending on what you're interested in, you could either go to where you normally go to watch the parade or go to Coburn School to partake in the events that are going to be there. And that's all of my report, with the exception of, Mr. Dykes will be talking in public discussion with, to elaborate on the senior luncheon, the tree lighting ceremony, and the gingerbread event, which are all going to be on Sunday, December fifth. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mr. Vaskus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brief report today for the month of October for Public Works. During our monthly inspection, a dead pine tree was found at Memorial that has now been removed. Memorial Park was prepared for the Sun Valley High School fundraiser. And the seesaw was repaired at Sampson. Just in general, we have received our bucket truck. It's now stickered and it's in service, as Terry mentioned. It handled the Hometown Hero banners for Parkside. And our remaining twenty-four banners for the Borough have been installed. Two were moved to a different location and two were repaired that started falling apart. The fourth quarter chipping is completed with forty-four stops. Year-to-date total of a hundred and thirty-seven stops. Street sign was installed at Hilltop and Edgemont Ave. Down tree behind one forty-five Ridge Road was reported. It was believed to be a Borough issue, but it is not. It's on, that is a homeowner, that is the homeowner's tree. Another dead tree at one thirty-three Meadow Brook Lane was reported. That's not on our property. It's on Parkside's property. Potholes, seventeen bags we used totaling a hundred and fifty pounds of cold patch. Year-to-date total is eighty-six bags, four thousand, three hundred and twelve pounds for the year. Two dead trees on the walk-in trails were cut down and chipped. Barricades and trash cans were placed out for trunk-or-treat at Coburn. And they were also placed there for, I'm sorry, were placed and removed for the trunk-or-treat at Coburn. Barricades and cans were also placed out for the car show at the Borough Hall and removed. PA One Call has thirty-three tickets for the month of October. Year-to-date, three hundred and ninety-one tickets. Two recycling bins were dropped off to residents in Needham. If you need another recycling bin, call the hall. We'll get you another one out there. Picked up some debris left on Cooper that was left behind by somebody. We got it out of the road, kept the road safe. The department has conducted five hours of hands-on training on the operation and maintenance of the utility slash bucket truck by the manufacturer that provided us said truck. There's no accident injuries for the month of October. And to finalize that, I would like to have an action item to hire two new temporary employee, or seasonal employees at the rate of sixteen dollars an hour. One would be Jeffrey Todd and Andrew Guthrie.
What's the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or questions?
Yes, can we just put the effective date of hire, when they're coming, when the start date is?
Would it be Monday?
We'd like to, I, I think we would like to get them in to get their paperwork done Wednesday.
With an official start date of Monday, which would be the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, we just want to put it in the minutes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have it as official. The start date is Monday then. And as a final thing, next week, Monday, Zone One Leaf Collection begins. We do realize that not all the leaves have fallen yet. If your zone has been completed per the schedule, call the hall. We'll take care of it. We're flexible.
And we will discuss in exact session tonight, among the other topics, adding a couple of pickup days to accommodate that. So.
Yeah, this, this same thing we've been doing for a while now. Unfortunately, the leaves are falling later and later due to climate changes and whatnot. So we're, we're flexible and we will, we'll work with the residents. And that's.
Fuchs.
All I have for Public Works. For zoning, I have nothing new. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pappas.
Can I just real quick say something?
You may.
I forgot to mention, I just wanted to thank Mike Garvey for the trunk-or-treat. He really worked hard on that. And there were, you know, and plus all the volunteers that helped him with that. There were a lot of great costumes, a lot of great trunks. It was a great day all around. So thank you, Mike Garvey.
Darth Vader looked awesome.
I'm echoing what Donna said. It was a great trunk-or-treat.
It really was.
I'm really trying to use the force here, not to say something.
Mr. Pappas, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I attended the Planning Commission meeting in October. This is the meeting that was basically on the Brookhaven Storage Facility that Mr. Will spoke of. I also attended the Borough Safety Meeting. Happy to report that no Borough employees were injured. That includes the firemen. I know Borough vehicles were damaged or involved in any type of accidents. And Hector, I remember you talked about the hands-on training for the bucket truck that the Borough employees handled. They have their qualifications on that. And I also just want to thank the voters. If you have to vote for me, it's always a smile and warms me up that, trust me with my judgment to, you know, make manageable decisions here in the Borough. So I thank you again.
And it was never a doubt.
As I said. That's all, Mr. President.
Mrs. Heller.
I just have a few.
Hey, look for it.
The Fire Committee meeting is scheduled for, the Fire Committee is meeting on Wednesday, the tenth, at six p.m. The discussion is going to be fire truck purchases as, as well as the process. The Police Committee is meeting on Tuesday, November sixteenth, to discuss civil service recommendations for the two full-time officers. The Parade Committee, I'm going to request a motion to waive the permit fee for the Parade Committee like we do every year. So I'd like to make that motion. Second or?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
One of the things to mention about the parade is that we also are honoring the healthcare workers. So please come out and help us honor them for all their hard work. And I want to personally thank the Garveys, not just for the trunk-or-treat event, but Mrs. Garvey specifically for making over seven hundred goodie bags for us to hand out for the parade. So it was her personal time that she took. So I want to personally thank her for doing that. Softball finished up this past weekend with all their fall ball. Basketball has started with practices last week and they are continuing this week. Town Watch is meeting on November nineteenth, right, John?
Yes.
November nineteenth at six-thirty. So anybody that wants to come up, please partake in Town Watch. Town Watch Craft Fair is Saturday, the twenty-seventh, from nine a.m. to three p.m. in the Hall. And I just wanted to thank Public Works for cutting the, the grass today at Scott Parks. So I appreciate that. And that is the end of my, oh, one last thing. I'm sorry. With the Thanksgiving holiday season coming up, I just want to remind people that the Real Church are still sponsoring their Thanksgiving baskets. So anyone that would like to donate any turkey or any of the sides, please donate them to the Real Church. And we also have a bin outside in the lobby.
Toys for Tots.
Huh? What is it? The Toys for Tots?
You can mention it.
Go ahead.
Was it for the Real Church too, or?
No, over here.
Oh, oh, and we're also doing the Toys for Tots. So we have a bin out front as well. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mr. Goward, sir.
Thank you. I want to thank all my neighbors for supporting me on election day. Being appointed in October twenty, it was truly an honor. But to be elected, it will make the appointment a distant second. I really appreciate the support the community really showed. And I'm truly honored. It's, it really wa, it was overwhelming to see the support that I got. And I truly appreciate everyone who came out and was able to vote. And either way you voted, just thank you for coming out for voting. It's what makes this country the best. And this is what we're here to do, to be the voice of the people. And hopefully, with the trust of everyone, I know it's, I'm not as confident as Mr. Heller. It's still quite a tight race.
You lead your race by a beard's length, isn't it?
But, uh.
Sorry.
No, but thank you very much. I really appreciate everyone's support. Thank you, Mr. President.
A real Johnny Carson, aren't you? Father Marshall Leslie, sir.
Got a couple of things here. Miller Brothers is stock grading at Pico meters and Williamson Avenue Chester Junction, the pumping station over there. They graded some valves and meters over there about two weeks ago. So that's it. End of my report.
Sir, Mr. Gavin is not here. Gives us the second public discussion question, or session, sorry. Is there anyone for public discussion? Come on up, Tom Dykes.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, you can.
Name and address.
Tom Dykes, three oh five West Brookhaven Road. So a couple of ideas, things for upcoming events besides the murder mystery this week on Friday night. And anyone can still come out. Please just let us, myself or Jim LaPera know. We'll make sure you get tickets for that. If you're interested, it's forty-five per person.
Eighty-five per couple.
Eighty-five a couple. Okay, thank you for reminding me.
Mrs. Heller made me pay for it, so.
Well, good.
I one date out every ten years.
Hey, you know. The next event after that is our, is Sunday, December the fifth. Starts out our long, long day with a senior luncheon. And what time are we starting at?
Who's that one?
One o'clock. I don't have my notes in front of me. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight.
Tell.
Where, will be sign-ups for that. We'll get the information to John. So seniors can come up and sign up for that and get their tickets for that. That night will be the tree lighting service and refreshments.
At six.
At six. Mr. Vasquez, did the ladies talk to you about getting power to the tree?
I'll tell you, sir.
Power.
Just make, just making sure.
There we are.
We're, we're saving the mon, we're saving the Borough money by using an already used tree that's on the property.
We know, we know that. It's a real tree. It's a real tree.
It's a real tree. So we're doing that.
Are we going to have singers?
Uh, we have contacted the Coburn Elementary, correct?
What are we talking about?
The tree lighting service.
No, I know that, but which tree?
The tree that's.
If you go out the door out here.
It's our tree.
It's our tree.
I'll wait back.
Is it a pine?
That's a pine tree.
The same one we always use?
No.
No.
It's a bigger, nicer looking tree.
It's not dying.
It's not dying.
I see.
Harry can.
So.
Actually, it was Lynn's idea.
It was Lynn's idea.
Awesome idea.
So do that. So the tree lighting service will be at six o'clock. We're, Coburn Elementary is on the way. Coburn Elementary Choir will be here. There will be light refreshments afterwards. And we're working on some other events going on. Unfortunately, we're not having the gingerbread this year. The, the people who supply that for us got a contract for a two-week program. So it kind of knocked us out of the way there for that. But we're, we have a couple of other ideas that we're looking at for doing. So if you're interested in that, please, please do that. Look for information on that coming up. And then we'll be going into the new year, right? So the next new year, the next thing in the new year will be Easter, probably. Easter. With other ideas coming up, look for that. We're still looking for our new ideas. We did take a brainstorming idea at the last rec board meeting of about thirty-five, forty ideas of new programs. So we're trying to involve all of the ages all the way around. Okay?
I did want to mention, as part of the new website, we're going to have an events section. So instead of the way it is right now where everything is kind of mixed together, where there's events and notices, and it's not going to be like that with the new website. You could click on the events page and everything will come up for rec board and anything else that's happening in the Borough where residents can attend. So that's a really good addition to the website.
Thank you.
They put a picture of you on there.
Huh?
Only for dart throwing.
Well.
Mr. Dykes, I also came up with two new ideas over the weekend. So, no, I'll let, I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Thank you, Tom.
Good.
Is there anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice. Second public discussion is closed. Counsel? Going once, going twice. Second public discussion is closed. Counsel, anything else?
Just have one more thing.
Sure, why not?
Before our brief exec session afterwards, we need to set a date for Charles Avenue residents to be informed of all the work going on in the backyard. So, so everybody knows. We're just setting up a meeting so they are aware of what's going to happen.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Catania, Mr. Wills, chiefs, anything else? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.